January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting is now called to order. For this evening, Director Martinez will be joining remotely and then Director Gottfried is excuse. First item is the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is agenda changes. Does the board have any recommended changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, the next item is school connections. The Board of Directors would like to thank Debbie Audette, Palco Elementary School Principal, and Heather Benjuda, Gordon Elementary School Principal, for preparing and presenting the Palco Elementary School and Gordon Elementary School data. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Evans, Debbie Audette, and Heather Benjuda to present the Palco Elementary School and Gordon Elementary School data.
All right, good evening, everyone, and it is my pleasure to have two wonderful elementary school principals discuss the data of their schools with the school board this evening. As mentioned, we will start with Palco Elementary School, and Deb's going to walk us through the performance measures. And I think at this point in time, the board's fairly familiar with how we're showing all of those indications for measures for students, but do feel free to ask questions if you need to do so. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Deb Alding. We need to go ahead and enable the camera on her computer and ensure that she is also audible.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'd love to come brag about my school and all the wonderful work that we're doing in our learning community at Palco Elementary. So tonight, I'm going to talk about the key data sources and analysis, go over our focus school goals and our action steps that we'll be taking in response. So Goal One, early foundations. This is our beginning of the year data. We're currently assessing our students right now for middle of the year, and we have a little bit of the data in, but not enough to provide middle of the year data. So this is our M-Class reading composite scores. M-Class is similar to our Acadiance test. It really is an assessment that provides a predictor of future reading success. It's similar, but it has some key differences. You can't really compare it apples to apples to Acadiance. So, beginning of the year, we had nineteen percent of our kindergarten, forty-four percent of our first graders, and sixty-eight percent of our second graders meeting standard. This assessment does assess an end-of-year benchmark. So they are meeting end-of-year benchmark if they're in the green or the blue. Okay? Only nineteen percent of our students in special education were proficient in foundational skills at this time when we took this assessment. Scott, let me go to the next slide. I'll set up the next slide while she's working on getting it to work. The next slide is a snippet of growth data from our parent. What you will notice is I don't have the reading composite score. It did go up to thirty-three percent. However, there is an indicator holding it back, and it's because of our curriculum. Our curriculum does not teach letter names at the beginning of the year. It teaches letter sounds and then teaches kids to blend the sounds into words, which means it teaches them to read words faster. But one of the subtasks is letter naming fluency. So they learn the letter names in the second half of the year. But the exciting thing when we get there is that decoding went from eight percent proficient at the beginning of the year, eight percent meeting end-of-year benchmark, to seventy-four percent. So seventy-four percent of kindergarteners are reading words. So go ahead and switch to the next. So if you see there, decoding, that's where students are able to take the letter sounds and blend them into words. So cat, cat, and they can read the word cat. So we had major growth. We also had growth in letter sounds and phonemic awareness. So the letter names will come along, but they just haven't been taught yet. Okay, next slide, please. In math, we have twenty-eight percent meeting end-of-year benchmark because I-Ready is also an end-of-the-year benchmark assessment. So they have the standards for meeting the end of the year at twenty-eight percent in kindergarten, fourteen percent in first grade, and nineteen percent in second grade. Now, most of this content has not been taught to these kids by the time they take this test at the beginning of the year, so we do expect a lot of growth here at the middle of the year. Numbers and operations is foundational skills. That's where your number sense and understanding operations like addition, subtraction come into play. And so we put our efforts into looking at that for intervention. So between twenty-five and twenty-two percent is where our kindergarten and second fell, and then twelve percent of our first graders were meeting end-of-year standard in that area as well. So to summarize, we need our kindergarten through second grade students. Go to the next slide, please. To hit that eighty percent proficient benchmark, that's kind of the sweet spot to know that your core curriculum is working. So that's, we're not quite there yet. We need to get there. And then our kindergarten through second grade in math, we're sitting at twenty-eight percent proficient in second grade was the highest, and then below that in other grades. So we need to work on the implementation of our core curriculum. And then our students are lacking skills in numbers and operation, and that's where that development of mathematical thinking, number sense, and fluency come in. And so we're going to put a lens on that area, that domain of math. Go ahead to the next slide. Okay, so some of our goals. Goal One are to increase our reading proficiency of our kindergarten through first-grade students, including those receiving lab services that are in our Tier Two and Tier Three from zero percent to sixty-five percent. So we're going to zero in on those kiddos who are struggling, and we're going to give them very targeted intervention. Increasing overall reading proficiency in kindergarten through second grade, we want to hit that sweet spot of eighty percent. We know that sets them up for success in third through fifth grade. And then seventy-five percent of our students performing at Tier Two at the at-risk levels in math and numbers and operations, we're going to move them to proficiency. Go ahead to the next slide. So our school improvement action steps are going to be to focus on the implementation of our core reading curriculum as well as our core math curriculum. We're in Year Two with math, so we're digging deeper into our practice. And then we're really learning our CKLA, ELA curriculum right now and how to differentiate through the core as well. Another piece we're working on is effective use of student data. We do have a new data system with M-Class. It is slightly different than what we're used to. So we are guiding teachers through analyzing that assessment and then using it to plan PDSA cycles and targeted intervention groups. And we're doing this with quarterly individual data chats with each teacher where we're analyzing the data together and supporting them with the intervention as well as adjusting lab services and other services that we have. Okay, Goal Two, whole child. Next slide, please. Next one. We looked at our culture and climate survey data from Panorama, and we are at sixty-four percent for school climate and sixty-two percent for school belonging. When I dug deeper, there's a few questions within each of those categories. And what we noticed is that in a couple of those questions, we had about twenty to twenty-seven percent of students picking the middle, which tells me, which is, you know, a neutral spot, but it's unfavorable in the survey. So one example was, does behavior hurt or help? Behavior on their students hurt or help your learning? And students, twenty-seven percent picked the middle, and it neither hurts nor helps. But I don't think they truly understood that question, that behavior either positive or negative, that, you know, bigger idea, broader idea of behavior positive and negative, does it hurt or help? Right? I think they might have been thinking of just one narrow piece of that. And so we need to dig a little deeper and help all of our three through five students really understand each question and the Likert scale for each question to make sure that they are really giving an answer that's meaningful to them. So we're going to do some work around that. And then our family data, school climate is a relative strength that we have there. And school fit, there were some new questions there, so I want to dig a little deeper into that with my leadership team, and we're going to try to figure out what are some things we can do to help our parents also understand that new section of the survey. Student well-being data, our strength is self-management. Our students are great at being prepared, following directions, feeling like they are polite and respectful. Where we are needing a little bit of development is in self-efficacy, which is really growth mindset. Persevering through those challenges when things get hard or become more rigorous, and I might not feel that I'm ready for it, but helping me to power through and know that I can accomplish hard tasks. And then emotional regulation, which we're working on with Ruler. Understanding that there's a moment when I can pause my feeling of big feelings and do something to calm my body and then use a pro-social skill to get my needs met. And then if you look over here to the side, you will see the students rating by teachers. And this is really exciting for me because our red shrunk this year and our green expanded, which tells me that what we're doing, providing individual supports for our students who are struggling with social-emotional as well as teaching our core social-emotional curriculum is working. We just need to continue to develop the strategies that we're using. School climate for staff, we are at sixty-four percent. When we dug into this as a staff, there were a couple of indicators where we dropped. And what we noticed was that it wasn't really about our school climate being not as positive because it is a very positive environment. It really was the angst we were feeling over having a second new curriculum in two years and really just feeling kind of that cognitive dissonance, right? Wow, I'm not sure what's coming next. I don't know how to anticipate what's coming next, and I haven't gone through the whole curriculum. So we have decided that as a group, we really need to dig in and support our colleagues that might be struggling with that new curriculum. And so we came up with some strategies like one-to-one coaching or team coaching, some backwards planning that could help us all feel a little more confident and comfortable. And then we are reviewing our charter and digging into how can we remember to lift each other up and give each other support when needed. And then our strength was educating all students. And if you notice in our attendance data, I'll just speak to it as we go to this slide. Go ahead, go to the next one. We went up from about ninety-point-five percent average to ninety-three percent. We're not quite at our goal of ninety-five percent, but we are trying very hard. Reeducating families. So again, attendance, we are working on because we know chronic attendance is going to get in the way of learning and student self-efficacy, so we are working hard on that. We're also working on our positive school climate. It is a strength with families, but we feel like we still have a room for growth with students and staff. And what we know that our students and staff need in this post-pandemic world is more connection in communities, so we have some action steps around that. We're also doing more communication with our families, especially because of ParentSquare. Love ParentSquare. We're able to send pictures, work projects, information out in a way that we haven't been able to in the past. And so we feel like our families are getting more of a lens on what's happening in our school and in our classrooms. And then students need explicit coaching in our emotional regulation. Okay, so our goals around here, ninety-five percent attendance is what we're hoping for. We would like to increase our ability to regulate emotions, experience positive feelings, and cope with those challenging feelings by about fifteen percent. And then we would like to increase our climate and sense of belonging indicators by ten percent. And so how are we going to do that? We've been really good at implementing Ruler in our school, but we know that we need to dig deeper with a couple of the Ruler tools and use them more efficiently with our students. So we're doing a lot of work right now with the blueprint and with the MetaMoments. And then also, we are working on targeted interventions for individual students based on whatever their context is or their background. And one thing that we are doing is we are reeducating our families on the importance of attendance and also our attendance procedures, and we're doing that multiple times in years so that we can improve attendance. We also do interventions and incentives around attendance as well. And avid culture, we're putting an equity lens on identifying barriers to rigor and college and career readiness. And so in doing some thought around what do we do about kids that have those barriers? How do we give them access in a way that they haven't had it before? Goal Three, all students experiencing success. The next one, please. All right, so our third grade here has seventy-five percent. They're seventy-five percent or seventy-eight percent proficient, and our fourth grade were seventy-eight percent proficient as well. Our fifth grade was at sixty-six percent proficient at the beginning of the year. In our three through five, thirty-nine percent of our special education students had the foundational skills for reading. And then in math, you'll see in third grade, twenty-seven percent were hitting that Tier One end-of-year benchmark. Fourth grade, we had thirty-two percent, and then in fifth grade, we had forty-four. And in three through five, we don't just look at the domain of numbers and operations to focus our intervention. We also look at algebraic thinking because it goes hand-in-hand with numbers and operations. So we put a lens on that as we're thinking about how to intervene for students and how to close the achievement gap. So one exciting piece here, though, is when I was looking at last year's incoming data and this year's incoming data, our three, four, or five increased in proficiency, not just in Tier One across the board, but in these domains. And that was very exciting for me because it shows that we're starting to gain benefit from our core curriculum. Next. This is our SBA data. You can see we've had increases from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three. And our biggest increase was at fifth grade. If you look there at ELA, we had an increase of nineteen percent. So we sent seventy-eight percent of our students proficient to middle school at end-of-year standard in reading and writing. And then in math, we made a big jump in fifth grade as well at fourteen percent. Each grade had an increase except it was slight dip in third grade math. Some other things that are interesting about this data. One thing that's really interesting about our SBA data, and it's not on that slide, but our Level Fours. Level Four is above standard, and it's a sign of rigor in reading and writing because SBA is a very rigorous task. In fourth grade, ELA, forty-four percent of our students were hitting Level Four, which is a huge amount. Fifty-three percent in fourth grade. That gave me chills. And then fifth grade, forty-eight percent. Almost half of our kids are hitting that level of rigor on the SBA, which is very hard to do, by the way. And so that shows me that our avid work is starting to really step up that rigor for all of our students. Okay, so obviously phonics and fluency are an overall strength for the three, four, five. Our spring SBA scores were strong with the highest increase in fifth grade. Our third graders, now our third graders on the SBA could have scored higher. They scored at sixty-six percent proficient, which is a good score. However, in our I-Ready at the end of the year, we had eighty-three percent proficient. So the reason why there was a gap there is because those are the kids in the pandemic that lost a year and a half of writing instruction in their foundational years when they're learning to write. And so we had that seventeen percent of our kiddos who were high readers that just couldn't make that jump to writing a three-paragraph essay from two sources. So this year, we're putting a lens on that, and in fourth grade, we are giving them more experience writing essays because they have to do a five-paragraph essay on the SBA in the fourth grade. So we are also, this data tells us that we need to do some work around our math, working on our core curriculum. And we need to do some strategic work in numbers and operations and algebraic thinking. Go ahead to the next. So some of our goals. We're going to increase favorable ratings by ten percent in our Panorama Culture and Climate Survey data that talks about blended learning because what we noticed is that we need to do some work around student voice around blended learning. What are the tools that were best for these students? And so that's where we're going to try to move that. We need to increase reading proficiency for students in third through fifth grades, including students receiving lab services in Tier Two and Three from zero to sixty-five percent. And seventy-five percent of third grade through fifth grade students performing in Tier Two and Tier Three in numbers and operations and algebraic thinking will reach proficiency in those domains. If I had my way, a hundred percent would meet. But some of those kiddos are multiple years behind, and we're doing our best to catch them up. But it may take a little longer for some than others. So what we're going to do is we are working with Avid still. So through WICER, which is Writing and Corey Collaboration Organization of Reading, we are adopting new strategies that are embedded in our core curriculum for ELA. And we are really zeroing in on those across the school with an emphasis on effective discourse and collaboration, the writing process, and the critical reading process. And then we are also working to add to our tool box for blended learning, not the core curriculum blended learning tools, but also adding some sophistication to some of the Google tools that we're using with kids. And also, we're working on effective grade-level PLC collaboration with a lot of backwards planning of our new curriculum, breaking it down, looking at the assessments, providing enrichment opportunities for the kiddos who are already meeting standard, and then also targeted interventions or scaffolds for students who need some extra support to the curriculum. And we do believe as staff that we make a positive difference in students' lives through exceptional teaching. We value every student, and who comes through the doors, we believe all students can learn. And we are trying to live that at our school.
Thank you so much, Deb. I really appreciate it. At this point, I will open the floor for the board if you have questions or comments that you would like to share.
Thank you. I always love these presentations. One thing that you mentioned with the Panorama data made me kind of think of something that for many years I didn't really think about before. Do the questions scale with age? So like you mentioned, like maybe the kids didn't quite understand the question, but so do they, or are they kind of language appropriate?
They're in blocks, so they're not like different from three, four, or five. They're somewhere for all the grade levels. So I did changes to middle, changes to high. But at the same time, I think probably the biggest thing that we're running into, even with adults taking the survey, is that several people don't understand the neutral ground of a Likert scale and how it actually impacts the scoring in that survey. Depending on the instrument that you use, that three can be leaned positively or neutral or adversely. And so in Panorama, it leans adversely. So it's just difficult for us to extrapolate data if a lot of people are marking three.
And I think we've seen that a little bit for a while, but I didn't think about the fact that younger kids, I mean, some of these questions, how they're worried, easily sway them away from what they really want to answer. And I had another question that I did not think about far in advance, and I will push on the spot. So that's something that you could think about and pass back up through the superintendent and tell us, though. With all these big neighborhoods coming on board right across the street, if you just kind of think about how that's impacted your school positively and negatively in lots of ways, I've heard anecdotally, a lot of kids are walking to school now from the... So just if you can kind of think about that and sort of pass up and let us know, you know, how that's going. So, thanks.
Thank you for your presentation. I'd like these two to do a good work for me to get to, you know, the beginning of school. Thank you very much. I am wondering, too, even with the kiddos, if they're looking at that middle of, well, I don't know, you know, you can choose that middle, but it sounds like they are, so that's interesting, too. I wish there was a better kind of overview way to look at the rigor because that was really good data that when you should be proud of that. That's really great to really share that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So thank you. The first thing I'll say is I really appreciate your openness and how much you highlighted the growth areas. That's really important for us as a board, you know, and helps us come from school to school. So thank you for that. And then, you know, congratulations on the SBA increase. That was one of the first things that jumped out to me. So definitely pass it on to your staff. And then the final thing is I appreciate you highlighting the special education data within your presentation. It just so happens, on more than one occasion, I've gotten community feedback from parents who at your school who were utilizing our services. Those conversations might have included tears of joy. I mean, it was like, it was pretty powerful feedback. So, you know, it's obvious that you're focusing on that group and just encourage you to do so because it's definitely getting across. So if you could carry that on to your staff, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I can say my special needs Palco Elementary graduate started a job this week.
Wonderful.
His first job.
Thank you so much, Deb. I really appreciate your time this evening. Thank you. And now I am going to welcome up Heather Benjuda, who is the very proud principal of Richard Gordon Elementary. And we will dive into the dynamic of Richard Gordon at this point. Once we get the, hopefully, the advancing sorted out.
Hello, thank you for having me. As Lauren said, my name is Heather Benjuda. This is my third year as the principal of Gordon Elementary, which is a great place to be. And I will just jump in. Look in the clicker works. All right, so these, you've seen on every slide. I'm going to go ahead and skip them. These were the early foundation goals listed in Everybody Sit. So again, repeat data for you. This is my P2 DIBELS data, and I really wanted to go first today, but now Deb has explained all of the things to you. So it's working out quite nicely for me.
I just want to highlight the consistency of assessment modeling across all of our elementary schools and how much it helps our data as a district when we look at it this way.
This is my seventeenth year at North Pitt South as an employee. I did thirteen as a student. And it's really an amazing place to be. So to have two really great curriculums and assessments and a student dashboard where teachers can go one place and see all of the data, it has really been practice shifting. So that is for sure a plus. However, Deb knows how to pull graphs. I don't know how to pull yet out of the new system, so I made these ones, which is why they don't look like Deb's. They look like last year's because I wanted them to line up. So this again is the DIBELS, or last year it was called Acadiance, M-Class. We call it all sorts of words still. And this shows who is at benchmark in these grade levels. So kindergarten, of course, for a lot of our kiddos, it's still their first run at school in kindergarten. And so there's a little percentage there that's meeting, but we have seen, I couldn't bring my growth, my lab testing has been out, and testing started on Monday for mid-years. So but we've seen a ton of growth. The kids we have tested, we did three, four, or five firsts to let kindergarten warm back up as we re-entered from break. But just like Palco, we've seen a lot of growth in the literacy data. And their first and second grade, this is the highest we've seen at a Benchmark One in the three years we've had data. So it's really great. We're really proud of it, and we, this is where we put a lot of focus because we know when kids learn to read in P2, it makes their life much easier moving on. This is our math I-Ready. Again, just kind of like what Deb showed you. It shows end-of-year benchmark for math. This is Benchmark One. So in kindergarten, twenty-four percent of those kiddos came in meeting the end-of-year benchmark. First grade, fifteen percent. Second grade, twenty-three percent. The lovely thing about this is I-Ready has an online component that levels student learning. So those kids, you're thinking, what am I doing with those twenty-four kindergartners that already know all of the kindergarten math? They're getting some small group instruction, but also I-Ready, every time they take a benchmark assessment, re-levels their individual path on their computer. So and we can adjust it. We can see the data. We can see if they rush. We can see if there's missing a skill. I see it as a principle. This is something I really incentivize with my kids. M-Class has something, CKLA, our new curriculum, has something called Boost. So every week, any kid who did forty-five minutes at eighty percent accurately, we have these little brag tags, and we do a lottery, and it's a really fun way to engage the kids in their learning. So these are our early foundation goals, or these are our noticeings. So we still have... So we still have K2 performing well below eighty percent. That's again, not unrealistic for a first benchmark of the year. But our goal, of course, is to get eighty percent of kids at Tier One. K2 students perform well below on end-of-year grade level standards in math, showing a significant need for explicit and systematic implementation. Again, this is year two of math curriculum. And everybody, it's so funny, because last year, of course, it was a huge stressor. And this year, we was like, oh, at least we don't have to worry about math, because we did it. And so the second year is much easier. Kindergarten is, of course, our greatest opportunity for growth in literacy skills, with eighty-one percent of them below or well below at the fall benchmark. And students across all of our grade levels at K2 lack skills within number and operations, which as Deb said, is really kind of that foundational skills of math. And so it's good for our teams to see these, so they know those are really the places to hit when we're giving direct instruction. All right, and these are the goals. So kindergarten students will increase proficiency on grade level literacy skills, which is the reading composite score, from nineteen percent to fifty percent by June, as measured by DIBELS. Now, our school plan is that our Tier One instruction makes it so eighty percent of students are at benchmark. I do know there's a difference between fifty percent and eighty percent, just in case anybody's worried. But again, this is a new test to us. There are pieces that don't line up, like our last assessment. And thirty percent growth is still pretty great. So it's partially hesitation on my side. I did this last year with iReady, I way undershot where I thought we'd end up in math. And then it just looks like amazing when, you know, blow it out of the water. But, so this is partially speaking to that. Our curriculum now teaches letter sounds instead of letter names to our teens, which is working out amazing, because I've heard so many kids reading so many nonsense words today, which is normally a huge area of struggle the last two years. And they were just whipping them out, and then they'd say, okay, tell me the name of this letter. "Buh." That's a wrong answer, according to M-Class. But a right answer according to CKLA. So there's just some calibration pieces. By the end of the year, they're gonna know those letter sounds. So it's not something we worry about, but just a learning curve. First grade students, this is all the same assessment, fifty-three to seventy percent. And second grade, sixty-one to seventy. These last two will be the highest we've ended a year when we hit these goals. And seventy is very close to eighty, and so that is very exciting. I think my first year, we came in and ended at like forty-seven percent. So that's, that's huge growth. And these are our steps. CKO Amplify will be taught in a hundred percent of classrooms, which includes skills instruction in K2. Students who need extra support will receive SIPs in lap groups. So SIPs, we had with our previous curriculum, because it did not have enough phonics instruction. So we still use it as a Tier Two intervention. And CKLA, our new curriculum, has a really incredible skills component for K2 that covers for almost all kids is, is all they need. A hundred percent of teachers plan and implement interventions, use strategies for instance of reading, and document using Plan Do Study Acts. That is just like a blueprint for where they're going. A hundred percent of classroom teachers engage in professional development, teach specific instructional routines, and foster accountable student discourse, use assessment resources to plan and guide instruction. This really speaks to our PLC process. And creating routines. So in both curriculums, there are routines that carry from grade level to grade level. So once they learn it in kindergarten, it takes some of that learning and new structure out as they move through grades. A hundred percent of classroom and special education teachers administer benchmark diagnostic and progress monitoring assessments. So this is also practice shifting. I would say, five years ago, Gen I teachers did not progress monitor as a general statement. I'm sure there were some who did. Now we have a systematic approach, and that just means we're giving small group instruction, we're giving intervention. How do we know it's working? We can't wait to the end of the year and check, or we've missed the vote if it hasn't been working. So in Gordon, that means every two weeks, students who are below the benchmark are getting progress monitored in that M-Class system. It makes some beautiful graphs for us, and we can tell immediately. Because it's not just growth, we have to intercept the place in which they're gonna meet their grade level standard. So it kind of gives us that gauge for where are we gonna meet that. And MTSS, so that means we have a process. What happens? We have an exact what happens if a student comes in at this score. What are the interventions we're gonna use? How are we gonna track them? What happens if that's not working? So, and teachers now with Panorama, in August, we spent a good chunk of our time learning. How can I see if the kid is missing not at benchmark for SEL skills? Or for math skills? Or for reading skills? And you can see it all on one platform without everybody having to go back and forth and remember how to pull that graph. So it's really been great. Goal two is our whole child embraced resilient critical thinkers. This is my response rates. This was a win this year. It is really hard to get the families to do the Panorama survey, because it's in the middle of Impact Aid, which we also feel very passionately about. And so we called them, and they said, but I did it. Well, they did one or the other usually, but this was a growth for us. And then my staff and student survey members are there. This was, on the right-hand side, there's several ways you can pull this. This one, for me, I pulled what it was last spring. So it's one less percentage point than it was last spring. And when we talk about climate and culture, these are kids who had been in our school for six weeks instead of ten months at the end of the last one. So one percentage point was not too concerning. And then school belonging there. Our big wins, of course, family, climate, and culture there went up eleven percentage points, and school fit up seven percentage points. My staff and I at a PLC, principals get a few that they get to direct. And so I actually printed all this data. Paper. And we looked question by question about our strengths and weaknesses. And we found a lot of threes, which again tipped to the not positive. But we also had some really great discussions about, I wonder why these kids feel this way? In Panorama, you can disaggregate the data. Is it just students with 504s or IEDPs? Is it just students of color? Is it students who, all sorts of things? Girls, boys, grade level? So there were some really great conversations and next steps from that, including Jeremy Sullivan from the Tech Department. He gives us a lot of resources to teach kids how to take the Panorama survey. And it falls by the wayside, especially in curriculum adoption years, which ironically are the two years we've done Panorama. So they're like, we don't have time. But now that they see the value in the data we're getting out of this, I anticipate I will have more teachers at this next poll explaining to the kids what the questions mean and how the scale works, and what that means when you click on a number. This was our teacher climate and culture, sixty-eight percent favorable. And then staff is all the staff that are not teaching. So, which is still quite a bit, it's about fifty-fifty in my building. So those were good, and we talked, we had some good conversations about why and what would change those numbers in, in that same meeting. Which also ironically, they were like, but I hit three. I hit the middle, I hit, I said it was fine. I'm like, okay, well now we know how this works, and so it might, we might see a difference. And these are kids rating themselves. So on the left-hand side, you can see these are how our third through fifth graders rate themselves on self-management, positive feelings, challenging feelings, emotional regulation, and self-efficacy. And on the right side is how teachers rate those same students. So again, this led to some really great conversations. Kids feel way more in control than the teachers feel they're in control. And so just what's that difference? And what is our, what is our line? And kind of rate their reliability? Because if you start, I can pick it up by teacher, teacher to teacher. And so then you can start seeing, okay, I know who these children are, and this isn't the same. It's not being rated the same. So again, more conversation. And they're like, can we talk about it before we write next time? So those were good conversations. This is our attendance data from last year. I didn't have this one in. We spend a lot of time also encouraging kids. We all have matching T-shirts this year. If they miss one day, less than one day, or one day, less than two days of school essentially, they get a little brag tag for the month that has the month, and there's a big competition board by classroom. So we've done it many ways, so there can be many celebrations. This is what our data told us. Students in grades three, five view self-efficacy and emotional regulation as their biggest areas of opportunity. So that's where we're gonna focus our teaching. Teachers' ratings show that fifty percent of students school-wide are meeting expectations in SEL skills, falling short of that eighty percent Tier One goal. Self-management and positive feelings are areas of strength on the third through fifth grade self-rated well-being survey. School climate is a strength and showed the most growth with our families. And data across the board shows need for increased SEL instruction and work on belonging throughout our community. And these were the goals. So Ruler was launched when we came back from COVID full day with Avid and many things. That, nope, that wasn't that year, that was the next year. So it gets dropped, just to be totally honest. It starts strong, we make our charters, we talk about it every day. And then by mid-year, we have mid-year data. And what are we gonna do for these kids who aren't growing? And it just has gone by the wayside. So at Gordon, we've never really fully picked up Meta Moment and Blueprint. So that's really where our focus is this year. We're using a chunk of time in our upcoming half-day PD to really dig into Meta Moment and Blueprint. They've been introduced, they just never really have been totally used. Our kids could tell you all day what color their emotion is in and what their classroom charter says. But these are the really important next pieces. Certified staff will participate in data review of SEL and climate data after each survey and contribute to the professional development plan according to the needs. We've done one of those already, and it was really meaningful. And then our K5 attendance were aiming for ninety-three percent. That is one of the, that one, tick, tick, tick. The academic and the SEL, you can get them to grow by percentage points. But that attendance one is a hard one to go after. This is just for your information. Since I wasn't sure how familiar you were with Ruler, this is our elementary SEL curriculum. And it teaches kids kind of like the zones of regulation, if you're familiar with that. But it's high energy, low energy, good feeling, bad, and we don't use good and bad, but... So if you are tired, you might be in the middle of the blue. And if you're angry, I have a student who frequently is screaming, he's in the red. So I read. Okay, yep, I see. So this is how they identify their emotions. We teach them a lot of feeling words that go along with these emotions. So I just heard a second grader tell me she was exasperated yesterday, and I was like, wow, that's a big feeling. So these are the pieces that us at Gordon, even the teachers and staff, are working on picking up. The Meta Moment is so important. We should probably just teach it to all the grownups too. It is stopping for a minute and saying, how do I feel? And what do I wanna, what, where, where do I wanna go here? What's the best thing I can do? I had a student, after we had had a long conversation, say, I need to look down the path. And I said, that is right, you need to look down the path. So that is really what this is. Like, this is how I'm feeling, what do I need to do, and how am I gonna get there? And then Blueprint is when things aren't going right, or you have conflict, there is a set of questions for how you're going to process and react. And often, these are just conversations, either with peers or with an adult. If it's to that point, sometimes we can write them down. Kids can have reset spaces. But these are really where our next two big steps are, to help our kids regulate. So you'll see on there the reboot and implementation of Ruler. So we had the first half of the year really solid for the last two years. But this one, these last two pieces are a big one. Assessment of whole child characteristics, so that's everybody engaging in the Panorama survey. Teachers using the Panorama data platform. This one is a huge one. It puts all of the data right at their fingertips. Attendance Awards, which I spoke to a little bit. And then MTSS Leadership Team. This is new to us this year. We have an MTSS team, which is how we address those kids who aren't growing like we think they need to, even after receiving interventions. This leadership team makes sure specifically that teachers aren't the only one looking at that data. So that means myself and the school psychologist and the reading specialist, we're all looking at everybody's data twice a month to make sure no one's falling through the cracks, because the teacher hasn't noticed their progress monitor is dipping, or the benchmark came in weird. So it's just puts more eyes on the data all the time. And goal three. So this, you're gonna notice, is just the same data, but with our third through fifth grades. So this is great, sixty-five percent of third grade at a benchmark or above. So those are great. We're trying to make those green and blues bigger, and the red and yellows smaller. And it's really great growth, and everybody was really proud of this. I am so excited to see how CKO Amplify is gonna impact these. Just maybe not even this crew next year, but when our K1, 2s start rolling through, it's gonna be pretty impressive. The things they have taught me about the body and the War of eighteen twelve. And, I mean, I've gone to a lot of school, and they are learning things I have never heard. It is really, really great. Third through fifth grade, this is our DIBELS data at the top for literacy, and then compared to the SBA data at the bottom. So that you'll see those numbers, they are co-horted. This one always confuses me, it really takes me a minute to wrap my head around. So you'll see the same kids, so the kids that are gonna graduate in 2031, you're looking at their spring, then their fall there underneath them for DIBELS. And that, the drop is not concerning, because again, it's measuring to an end-of-year benchmark. So that fall score is gonna go up, and we're gonna see more kids meeting the end of year. And then this is their math. Again, end-of-year benchmark, but looking at fifth grade with thirty-eight percent of kids already starting at benchmark at the beginning of the year is really, really great. So that is a really fun place to be. My fifth grade team is actually sharing kids during that intervention time. We have it built into our schedule. And there is an enrichment group, which this is the first time. We've been so busy trying to intervention, everybody up to where they're supposed to be. It's so nice to see people really accelerating kids. And then this is the SBA and iReady math. So same slide as you saw for literacy, but for math. And we've really seen some great growth there as well, so that's, that's really nice. And my team last year realized we needed to do more SBA interims, which are like practice tests, just so the kids see and are comfortable, because a lot of it is just, it's not how our normal instruction looks. And so it's a, it's a jump there. This is what our data tells us. ELA is an area of strength for students in three, five, with sixty-seven percent of students or more in each grade level meeting the fall benchmark. That is an amazing place to be starting. Fifth graders started the year at seventy-two percent of students meeting grade level benchmark on the DIBELS, that's the M-Class, and being the closest grade level to meeting Tier One, which is also a celebration. iReady shows the highest percentage of fifth graders meeting year-end standard at thirty-nine percent. And math scores across both SBA and iReady show a continued need to implement core curriculum. Area of opportunity with all stakeholders in instructional technology domain. I took the slide out. Parents do not feel positively about the Chromebooks at home, which is not shocking, because some days I don't feel positively either, just because there's a lot of other things that come with access to the internet, as I'm sure you all know. And so it's just a reteaching of how we use them, and the kids are really so very smart. They're just always finding a way around us. So it's just a reteaching as a tool, and it's a good tool to have. By June 2024, sixty percent of students receiving lap and special education services will make 1.5 years growth in their reading composite in the M-Class or DIBELS. So this is really where my own goals are focused, is bridging, closing that gap for those kids that aren't yet meeting our benchmarks. And so I really track that very closely. I meet weekly with my reading specialist and check in with my special ed teachers and make sure those kids are getting the growth and intervention they need. And sixty-five percent of third through fifth grade students will meet proficiency on the iReady math assessment. All right, and this is our family picture from last year. This is, well, I did this on the last day of school, which was a foolish mistake. But, you know, I learn something new every year. This year, that's what we're not doing. Just, we believe every member of the Gordon community deserves to feel acceptance and belonging. We believe that climate in our school greatly impacts how our students learn and what they are capable of learning in a safe environment. And we really just love the curriculum. It's a little like drinking out of a fire hose this year. And sometimes people are like, I'm like, where are we on the pacing? And they're like, Heather. And I'm like, I know, but we just gotta move. So everybody is really loving it. It is really amazing and rigorous content for kids. They are learning so, so much, as I said, and it builds really well. And my kindergartners were learning about the five senses, and my first graders were learning about the four body systems, and my third graders were learning about how the eye talks to the brain and how it flips it over in your head. And I'm learning all sorts of things. So it is really a great place to be, and we're really excited to see all the growth that's gonna happen now that we're in this really great place. So thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much, Heather.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for doing the Meta Moment slide, because with older kids, I'm definitely more familiar with the character strong than I did with Ruler. And with Panorama, I think, you know, maybe we can remind everybody, you know, anytime you ask, especially if other things are okay, how things are, and they say, fine. We all know that's not positive. So if they're doing fine as a three, then come on, we know that's not the right answer. And then, thank you for highlighting the kids that are doing third as well. Because rightly so, we always focus on the kids that aren't meeting benchmarks. And we talk about that all the time. But there are those kids that are, that are excelled up, and we need to not forget about them. So thank you for highlighting those students and what we're doing to keep them going, you know, and not to have them get bored and backslid, because, you know, that, that we can hear their needs is just as important. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much for your energetic presentation. I enjoyed it, and just kind of get a little more about how it's been at your school. So lots of things to add there. And I'm really grateful to hear the positive feedback about the difference, especially just coming into this, the difference between now...
especially just coming into this, the difference between now having access to the data and what that means to you as your staff and how you can use that for the kiddos. So that's really good to hear, that things that are being implemented are really being utilized and a positive one. So thank you for that. I did it, too.
Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you, excellent presentation. For me, as you highlighted, the family assessment of the school climate was, was pretty impressive, pretty high compared to even the other schools we've seen. I was kind of curious, tough question, because there's no real data behind it, but I mean, the parent participation, I mean, are you, do you think you're kind of getting back to pre-COVID levels? Or you think you're still, still growing in that?
No, I actually just talked to the PTA president about that today. No, I think there's still a lot of growth to be had. We do a really great job, our PTA especially, but we have a lot of community events, so at least once a month. I did a state of the school, and we did a curriculum at the beginning of the year. So I essentially presented our STEM plan to my community. And even at that, maybe forty people were there of the four hundred students that we have. But we, I think it's just a really warm place, and people feel, feel really welcome there. I work really hard to know everybody's name and their parents, at least by face. And, but I think the kids feel that, too. And we spend a lot of time praising and building up the positive things. And so I think that has a lot to do with it. And like Deb said, parents' square is a huge help. I mean, we've had, sometimes we have kids get sick, and we can't get a hold of anybody, and they have a hundred and two-degree fever. And now my office staff can get on their computer and essentially send a text message to a parent via the message. And so parents will like shoot right back, and you can tell they're on their phones. THX, be right there, you know? And so it just also creates a sense of like, oh, we're a family, and we're all taking care of each other, and we can communicate, and we're not leaving these lengthy voicemails. And so parents' square is helpful at times, too.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Then it makes sense that, you know, even with them not being there, the communication is really paying off. So that's probably something to look at. And honestly, it just makes it that much more impressive, impressive, because, you know, then I think there's, like you said, you have that clue of, you know, getting more parented and building that, that's a link to build off at that point. So excellent job, thank you.
Heather, thank you so much, I appreciate you being here this evening.
Okay, so at this point, we will move on to this team meeting. The next item is public comments. The Board Kids Up School District Board of Directors, what means a public is open to public meetings. In accordance with board policy and state law, board meetings must be conducted in a civil, orderly, and businesslike manner. This means that whether we are school directors, staffs, duties, members of the community, or guests, we must all follow the same standard of stability during school board meetings. We value public comments, the purpose of public comments, so that the public has an opportunity to speak to potential items on the agenda prior to board action or consideration. Speakers can sign up by following the procedure outlined on every published agenda as well as being stated on the school district website. The signup process is intended to ensure that both in-person and virtual attendees have the same opportunity to sign up for a public comment. Individual speakers are given three minutes for their comments, the board sets aside, and maximum of thirty minutes for public comments per meeting. There is no mechanism for a speaker to donate some or all of their time to another speaker. The person who signed up to comment should be the same person who addresses the board. No speaker may speak more than once per meeting, even if there is time or rating. Please note that the board cannot engage in discussions with the speaker during public comment to ensure compliance with the Public Meetings Act of the State of Washington. The board will not respond to statements, questions, or challenges made during the public comment period, and there will be no back-and-forth dialogue. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a sign of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker. The board may ask district staff to contact a speaker at a later time to follow up on issues raised during the public comment period. Finally, please remember that your words have impact and that you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and prohibiting defamation. If you are unsure of legal effect of your remarks, you should seek independent legal advice prior to making public comments. When it's your turn to speak, please approach the podium if you're in person. If you're commenting via Zoom, you will be promoted to panelists on Zoom. You must then turn on your video and microphone to make a public comment.
The first public speaker this evening is Suzanne Crosby.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Suzie Crosby, and I live here in North Kids Up, and I raise my kids here in the school district. My youngest actually was in school with Rick's youngest, so. I've been here at this podium a time or two over the years, and tonight I have five things I want to talk about. The first is, I mentioned last time, the public comment signup. So I know you all are not doing public comment, we all are doing public comment. But to sign up for public comment, the process has gotten very strange. It used to be normal, and now to sign up, we have to go on a twenty-five-minute window. So the day of the meeting at four-thirty, I have to jump on my computer, go to a forum, sign up, and I have to then hurry over here to the building. And I'm lucky that I live close, a lot of people are trying to drive here or coming off of work. And I just don't know what the purpose of a twenty-five-minute window is, because hopefully you all want to be hearing from us all. And I don't know why it's not a twenty-four-hour window or a seven-day window or just sign up anytime for the next meeting coming up. So it's unclear to me, and it doesn't say on the website what the purpose of that limited-time window is. So that's one thing I'm hoping that you all please address. I'd love to know the reason for the twenty-five-minute window. If there's a good reason, maybe I'm just missing. The second thing is filming. The board used to do filming of their meetings and put them online. I don't know how that got stopped. I think maybe both of these things had something to do with COVID that we just don't know about. I wasn't coming to meetings during COVID. So in the meantime, I'm filming, I'll put them online. I hope you all get back to filming your own meetings soon. And I know there's that law changing coming up in, is it June? Anyways, the law changes pretty soon. So hopefully you all do that sooner rather than later. Third thing, committees. This week, I was at some of the bond presentation meeting, and I heard something about committees that got me wondering. So I went online to the district website, and I looked, and there's only three committees listed. And I thought, wow, where did all the committees go? So I've been coming to meetings for over lots of years. We used to have a lot of committees, so what happened to them? I've put in a public records request, I'm gonna try to figure out how many we used to have, how many we have now, and I'll send that to you all via email or maybe speak at the next meeting about that. But my concern about that has to do with, that's one of the ways I feel like that people are communicating to this board and the school district, through those committees, and where have they gone? The last thing is, I wanted to say, thank you all. I saw many of you come to the bond presentations. I'm so glad to see our elected representatives out at those meetings. And maybe the kids could come to, young people. It'd be great to have everybody come to those meetings. There's another one coming up on the seventeenth. All right, thanks, everybody.
Our next speaker is Agnes Durk.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Charles Durk, I live in Indianola. I have three kids, all of them attend to options at Wolfly. Tonight, my comments are, or questions, actually, although you said you're not answering them, are about a report by Flow Analytics. So this is an analysis of the student generation rates as a result of recent single-family and multifamily construction within the district. We mentioned the construction polls, but the findings of this analysis is used for planning of the construction of, for new schools. And that's important for the upcoming bond, which we are asking for quarter-billion dollars to build schools. And this report is relevant and important, because this is, this tells us how many, how many students are we thinking in the future will be attending our schools, so we can build the right schools for them. Now, pages thirteen and fourteen of this report itemize residential development projects in the district from twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-two. As most Kingston, Indianola, and Hansville residents know, there are two major residential developments in this part of the district. One development is called Coit Kingston, four-hundred-forty-ton homes. Another is Argorwood, which is up to seven-hundred-plus homes in multiple phases. Any resident who reads this report will be surprised to find out that these two developments are excluded from this analysis. They may repeat using different words. North Kids Up School District is basing its population estimates using a report which excludes two very large developments in Kingston, which themselves will have tremendous impact on population, traffic, police, force, fire, departmental, departmentary system, and other services that are even traffic studies done for that, Argorwood. My question to the board, why are these developments excluded from the analysis? Did North Kids Up School District explicitly instruct Flow Analytics to exclude these developments? If so, why? Our superintendent claims that Argorwood is a senior community, thus does not impact student demographics. Where did this information come from? Upon following up with the developers, I learned that only a small percentage of the houses are dedicated to be fifty-five-plus, and they will be built in the later phase of the development. I would like to know why our superintendent is misleading the community on this subject. Did the board members themselves read the analysis? Will North Kids Up School District request a correction on this report? And will this, will North Kids Up School District update their cost for the proposed school constructions based on the population for these two communities to be built? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt Holman.
Good evening. I have two sons in Suquamish Elementary, and I'd like to talk tonight about the gym there. But first, I echo the comments on the registration process for public comment. There's a lot of potential inequities there that I think it needs fixed, but I'm gonna save that for another time. So to the gym in relation to the bond. First, with the gym, I'd like to understand better how this was determined as a priority, who from the community, who from the staff were involved in setting it as a priority. Our school needs a lot of work, and I'm not sure this is the best place to put resources. Second, why were the documents for the county to get the gym permit just filed on December thirteenth, three-hundred-and-twelve days after they were requested by the county? And only after the community became upset about this bond? And third, this gym is smaller than our current gym. It's not even an adequate size for a full basketball, basketball court. I recently learned that no teachers, including our gym teacher, were involved or consulted in its design. You know, talking to the users of the space who spend their time there is really asset management one-on-one. You don't design a kitchen without talking to a chef, a cockpit without talking to an airport. You shouldn't design a learning space without talking to teachers, really basic stuff. To the bond and how it relates to the gym, I first want to say, I really applaud the investment in Wolfly. I think that's desperately needed, and I'm glad the community and those staff are giving that. But I don't think that excludes, is a reason for excluding Suquamish. The main reason that we're hearing that Suquamish was excluded is because we were part of the levy and we're getting this gym. But lots of other schools were part of this levy, too, and it hasn't precluded them from getting investment. Now we're hearing that, well, maybe it was the bond that we got twenty years ago, and we got money from that, and we need to wait our turn again. Again, a lot of schools got money through that bond, and they're not being asked to wait. This week, we're starting to hear that maybe Suquamish will get a portion of money from the critical repairs in the bond. Even if we just get a fifth of that ten million dollars, that's still less than one percent of the money. The two thousand and eighteen building assessment said Suquamish will reach the end of its useful life by twenty thirty-seven if it didn't get substantive investment. The school really is a ticking time bomb, and we need that investment now. We're overcrowded, our school doesn't even have an adequate conference room for our teachers. My kindergarten class has twenty-four kids in it. The fourth-grade class is in a aged and decrepit portable. And there's nowhere for these kids to go, even if we, if we strong classes, without eating into other critical space. We really do need more space. The, the school's own assessment shows we're set to grow by thirty students over the next, next decade. We need safer space, and we need space that doesn't depress you when you look at it. I really want to be a yes vote on this bond. I still may vote yes, but it really turns my stomach to vote for something that, that's inequitable like this. You know, equity is about being inclusive and not exclusive. And fundamentally, it's about resources and assets. Who's gotten them in the past, who's got them now, who's getting them into the future? I don't think any of you are bad people, I think you're here for the right reasons, that everyone has some unconscious biases and blind spots. So I'll just leave you with two questions. Can you imagine one of the schools imposing pulse bow being excluded from this bond? And what the pulse bow's community reaction would be? And I'm at time, so I'll just leave you with that one question. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Hinden.
Good evening, I'm Scott Hinden. I recently got a book on Elon Musk, and he's amazing, brilliant, driven, crazy guy, but hugely successful. And he has some things that he lives by, really runs his companies by. And we're not Elon Musk, and you're not Tesla, but you are directors, not followers. You're directors of this school. One of the principles that he employs is he has skip-level meetings. And what it means is, he doesn't meet with the senior managers. He meets with people down the line, sometimes even going to the factory line and seeing what's going on, so he can see problems himself and evaluate it. The principle that we have here is, a parent talks to a teacher, a teacher talks to a principal, a principal talks to a upper management, a hillperson, they talk to the superintendent, and then maybe it gets to you. How do you think that flows? What I'm thinking is that you should do skip-level meetings. Your directors, that you could meet with citizens, you could meet with teachers. I know when I was on the board, I had almost no input except from the superintendent. And that's sad, because I think it filters and misses things. You could have, as somebody suggested, a community meeting in your district. You could say, I'm the school director, I'm meeting in your district. I want to tell you a little information, I want to hear your concerns and comments. You could bypass that whole process. I'd encourage you to consider skip-level meetings, where you actually get real data from real people without it being filtered. Elon has one other thing he does, is nobody can tell him if there's a regulation and this is why we did it. He builds rockets, he does tunnels, he does Tesla, he does all these fantastic things. But you can't just say, oh, well, there's a regulation. He says, I want to know who wrote it. Where is it? Why are we doing this? Is there a reason in physics that we're doing this? And his mantra is delete, delete, delete. If something's not there, you delete it. But what he does is, he asks the hard questions. And of course, he's Elon, and he's different than you. But at the same time, the principle of getting to the core of issues, like five times I've seen in our voter pamphlet that our schools are unsafe, or suggesting they're unsafe. Who said that? I've heard that Little Maple has no access there. Who talked to him? Who was the person? I'd like to know. Who went there? Where's the letter? Wolfly is not educationally feasible anymore. Why is that, really? Public schools continue to lose students, while home and private gain. You should know why. Thank you.
Last speaker is Beth Novak. It looks like she's on Zoom, but her promoting panels, please turn on their screen. All right, you're on the screen, you can begin. Hold on a second, just one second, sorry. Great. Sorry to interrupt.
My name is Beth Novak, I'm a parent of two boys at Suquamish Elementary, and today I'm here for my kids. I spoke to these kids about how they don't do anything for their wellbeing. So I can't wait to tell our kids that we've been justice, and you don't pick up your part of the problem. And I think by telling out one school in the entire district not to receive capital funding to this bond, and that school being the one that's historically overlooked is a great injustice. And the answer the district has provided, why Suquamish is excluded, has defined logic. It is not because we are getting a gym. I can talk to you about the inadequacies of our building. But at the end of the day, it's not a building that makes us school, it's the people inside that matter. Our teachers repeatedly work kids, the deeply in-depth, and I know our kids are blocked at that school. I have seen kids run out of cars, hug teachers at the end of the building, to help those every student I name. They show up at the kids' concerts and sporting events. They treat our kids like family, and you can't try that in your house. And their dedication is not driven by financial compensation, and they carry out their responsibilities despite lacking support from our district. Their motivation lies in genuine commitment to our community. And continuing to treat our school as a second-tier priority or as a half of thought, I fear many staff will not stay at our school and currently continue to give up for out of the district. Even if they do stay, this is, this demoralized feeling of mapping and method and treating equally will have devastating consequences for years to come. I'm here to say it's not okay to leave our school on the capital project list in a bond as big and as important as this one. Our kids are as important as every other student in the district. They deserve that clean air, classrooms that are They deserve that clean air, classrooms that are affordable, and modern and safe buildings, but everyone else will get through this bond. I am not opposed to public education, higher taxes, Florida bond, I'm opposed to this bond. Because of the exclusion of Sue Palmish, the lack of staff and teacher, parent, and community input in developing this bond, and while the district has made commitments to address Sue Palmish's long-term needs, I have worked out above sincerity of these promises, especially because of the historical pattern of inequitable treatment at our school. Another bond will happen for at least twenty years, making Sue Palmish over eighty years old by then. I hope those parents who schooled are up for shiny new buildings to upgrade will put themselves in the shoes of parents, staff, and students at our school. I would hope community members who care deeply about equity, they will stand behind our kids, our teachers, and staff for the next generation of kids at Sue Palmish to not endure being educated in an old building that is direly of attention. Our superintendent and board need to know that inequity is not permissible in our community, and their honesty is of all and for all students to be backed by action and commitment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the next item will be superintendent's report. Dr. Evans, would you please provide your comments to the board?
Yes, so it has been a very busy return from the winter holiday break with a number of visits to various community organizations, as well as hosting a community forum last Thursday at Pearson Elementary School, all of that pertaining to informing the citizens about the bond, providing information and the Q and A session. Just last night, I was up in Kingston at the KCAC meeting, again presenting information about the bond program. Next week, I will be speaking again at another community hosted forum by North Kids Up School District at Wolfly Elementary. That will be Wednesday at six P M. I'll add that elementary school's gym. And again, it's going to be the same presentation as last time, but it will again allow for folks to hear the information and also have some Q and A. That is really important.
I just, I question, do people aren't able to attend those meetings? Is there a website or a place they can go to? There just seems to be a lot of misinformation.
Yes, there is a lot of misinformation. So a great place to visit would be nkschools.org/bond. And on that website, we have posted a number of documents along with a complete project list, basically a project timeline of how we would enact and undertake all of the projects, and then also the financing for the bond and other relevant documents. So that's all there on the school district website. We have generated what we call one-takes that are at every single elementary school and secondary school. That just went out earlier this week, and there's been a document that's been out and available for people to pick up, pick up at any of our facilities since, I think, mid-December. We will likely engage in a direct mail piece that will provide information on the bond program as well that will go out to all households in the North Kids Up area. That has really dominated most of my personal time. I know that as we come back from break, there have been a number of events, and that is we approached the Martin Luther King Weekend. There are a number of recognition events being hosted at most of our schools. And it sounds like from a discussion with principals and from the times I've been out in schools that things have been going quite well since we've come back. We will, we will exec team getting up in the morning, unfortunately, because it sounds like the weather's been a little more predictable than planned. But I did spend a fair bit of time this week also playing the role of amateur meteorologist, as often happens when the threat of winter weather is approaching the school district. That's all I have for the day.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next item is board reports. Does any board member have a report to share in regard to their assigned bias opposition?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so as you probably know, this week started the new legislative session, short session, sixty days. There are quite a few education-related bills closed. I'll be looking to build a tractor to be legislated throughout the next two months. I am signed up, thank you, Cory, for Woz's Day on the Hill, which will begin in the month. So I'll be down there for two days. I'll be, I need to reach out to our local legislators to kind of set up meetings, but I have other schedules that tight, so I'll do our best. And then our neighbors in the south are doing the same, so I mean, join forces if, if the time is tight. But what I was gonna suggest too, especially for newer board members, I did a deep dive on Woz's Strategic Abysse pages after you all turned me into a ledger app. And there was some pretty significant information on there that I hadn't even looked at before. So the role, Woz's role of strategic advocacy, the role of ledger app, the role of board in, in this arena, there's some really good information on there if you have time to look at and read. There's the complete handbook of Woz's priorities, which is extremely long. So that's a deep read. But did the general permanent positions, you know, fix the vertical model of school safety? Some of the highlights are, that's a one-pager. So if you ever want, you know, if there's something to print off, and anyone ever asks kind of what does Woz do with the legislature for the collective school directors of, you know, to talk to their legislators, they do have a one-page sheet that's very useful. But yeah, that's where we're happening now. The Woz Ledger meeting this week got canceled. But there is one every Monday from now until beginning of March. So that's where I'll be every Monday at five-thirty. I'll watch it to see where they stand and so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Um, I, coming back from the break, it feels like I'm still getting going again. I was able to attend the bond meeting at Pearson Elementary. So it was good to be out in the community, and I hope to do more of that. I know we're working on, working to get the next scheduled meetings so that I am in attendance at the, both the tribal, uh, because of Sue Palmish, our local meetings that we have. So I'm just looking forward to really, I guess, getting to hit the ground running.
All right, thank you, Rick. Okay, if nothing else, do you represent, um, do you have any reports this evening?
Um, so we have a principal or faculty committee, which is basically a group of students at our school. We meet with the principal, and recently, they've been talking about how to equitably acknowledge clubs versus such as drama club, these aren't only sports. And recently, they've framed posters in the holiday beach club. Um, we had a future art professionals club. We had them collect art supplies for patients at the Seattle Children's Hospital. And we also have our Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Sunday tomorrow. And then also, my, after my first meeting as a student presented, I created a box where students could drop their suggestions and questions. And just this past week, I received a first no in the box. It was a concern from the students, so I just wanted to release it off so that I don't change any of their ways. They said, I don't think the drama club should be charged to use the auditorium. As a student, this tribute takes away from our club and makes the experience a little more topical for everyone. So it was sad. And then we also had a pasta training night last night. It's helped, um, that we've never given the pasta before.
At Kingston, we have a few events coming up that we're really looking forward to. Tomorrow morning, hopefully, if we don't have, let's start, we have a Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Sunday with a guest speaker, Robbie Robinson. Sounds like he's pretty amazing, and I'm excited for that. And then next Tuesday, the sixteenth, that we've, we're going to be acknowledging Temperance Day, and we're going to be having, I'm not sure who exactly it is, but some group is going to be coming to the high school and encouraging sixteen-year-olds and older to register the book and encouraging and focusing on the power of it. And then also, our drama club is putting on play next Thursday through next Saturday. I'm not sure what the exact times are, but there should be one or two shows today.
Okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Rick, you look like you're quick to bring, do you have anything to bring, folks?
Um, not sure, Brian, anything? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so next we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items nine point one point one through nine point one point four. Motion is needed to approve the consent of agenda. Do I have a motion?
I am going to accept, send agenda items one point one through nine point, nine point one through nine one four.
Okay, thank you, Rick. And we need a second for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
And I'm yes, and Brian? Okay, yes. Um, and there are no opposed. The motion passes four zero four. Okay, um. And the next is a board action resolution zero one zero one two four, which is canceling state warrants, and motion is needed to discuss resolution, um, zero one zero one two four. Do I have a motion?
Need to approve agenda item nine point two, resolution zero one zero one two four.
Okay, and we need a second. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Do we have a, any due comments for discussion?
I just wanted to say, um, mic for answering the one question I had about it, so it would help me, um, understand. I noticed the one year date, and there are some other ones on there, so some of them look like they're just being caught up. Um, I've got my system for graphics before, so I'm glad to have that cleared for you.
Yeah, I, I think we all, I think we all had a kind of similar comments on this one. So, yeah, basically just the, um, no order needed in this one, so we're on order of procedure. Okay, any other comments? Okay, um. If there is no more discussion, I put a question to vote. All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, and Brian? Okay, yes. Uh, and there are no opposed. The motion passes with a vote of four to zero. Uh, next item is management reports. The management reports will be turned over to Dr. Evans and staff. Do you think there are any questions the board has regarding the materials provided?
Okay, the first two items are field trips for the band at Kingston High School. And one is in April and one is in May. And as the board members are aware, we try to get these approved upfront, and then the students will engage in the fundraising. As soon as students come back again, then they get closer to time with final information. But anytime students travel out of state, the board does need to approve that, that travel. So this will come back next week for action, but this is just your confirmation.
Okay, no questions.
It should be straightforward.
I'm going to see the kids trap over here.
All right, the next item is the Bloom computer replacement cycle purchase. And one thing I do want to mention on this, oops, sorry, is not going to do an update on here. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention on this is that this is a refresh cycle for our Chromebooks for our elementary students. Uh, the original post on this had elementary on the summary and secondary on the recommendation. We did go ahead and go back and fix that, so it's elementary on both. Um, so that is what the recommendation is, is to approve the twenty-seven hundred Chromebooks so that we can start that refresh cycle. It's hard to believe we're at that stage where we're now in the phase of needing to replace devices for students, but we are here now. So that's what is being asked for, and if there are any questions for, we can go back.
Yeah, um, just could you highlight the funding source?
The, the capital levy is the primary funding source for this, and so that's going to be about the final.
And my view, just a kind of, I'm just looking forward on this. You know, obviously, if we were to set the board at one time, that could be an issue. And, um, this, this is about just a huge undertaking, so, um.
Very much so.
Looking forward to this.
But I will pass that thanks on to Jeremy Solomon and Michael Lillia. Um, they're the two who did the, the line share and the lift on this and putting it together, making sure that we're in good, a good space for this. Uh, the final management report is the Sue Palmish Elementary Gym Edition. Uh, this is being brought forward because we will be drawing out the bid, and there will need to come back to the board after that to ensure that we will be able to move forward with the project. So we're just gonna make sure you have heads up on this before we go out. And we're doing that tomorrow. Um, and then we've got a process that we follow for bids to come back and the acceptance, et cetera.
Um, just really just for clarification, I know you've answered this question before, so I apologize for repeating it, but can you just kind of give an update on the permitting process? And where we're at with that and kind of the timeline? Because again, there continues confusion, confusion on this.
There is some confusion on this. Go, yes, please. I will welcome you to podium if I can, to give some insight.
As I understand, the district did, whenever this project was kind of greenlit, go to the county and look for the permit, and it, it just was such a lengthy process. That's kind of what triggered the Palo Middle School project to start earlier. What we heard this last week from the architects was that they're ready to, in the pre-conference meeting, actually kind of hand over the permit to us. And the pre-conference meeting can't occur until we've actually chosen a contractor to do the project. So the bids that will go out tomorrow publicly, and then they're advertised next, this Friday, next Friday, will ultimately, the board will accept the low bid on the project. And then that will trigger the pre-conference meeting with the vendor. That's when the, the county will issue the permit. So we're, we're right on, I mean, we, it's, it's basically happened, but they don't actually provide it until we have that meeting. That's the process the county follows.
Yeah, definitely comparing the projects inside the city limits and the county limits are definitely, it's apples to oranges. So we need to be careful not comparing those, just entirely different processes. Um, and this is, you know, this is a project we've been looking at for quite some time. The, the capital, the committees, two facilities, our two committees, the facilities are, I asked me even, were working on this for some time. Jason brought us the, the concern of the capa, capital auditorium quite some time ago, and the fact that at least two of our schools did not have this facility, the rest did. So we've been fixing that inequity for some time, and this rolled along there, which was helping out. So I look forward to, hopefully, get this started. Um, I did, I'm, I'm assuming we're starting during the school year, so the weekend before the next year, is that already?
The, the hope is that we'll be able to get through the project and have it ready to go by the start of the year. I would, I'm just gonna say, I think it'll be almost through the end of September before the wraps, but we're gonna try to get into it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
They're estimating, I think it's five months, but I, I, my feeling is when we hear five months, we probably should predict six, just to say.
Well, you just know, you know, I always say that I always prefer construction to occur when the kids aren't there, but.
So do we.
Yeah, definitely.
Sometimes it is physically impossible.
Definitely rather start in the end of the school year, so they have a nice new facility, they start a nice school year, than start in summer and have them come back to school while the construction's going on. So if you can make that happen, then that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little concerned too, because I know in my previous experience with the county, once you have a contractor, that pre-meet even depends on the county's schedule. So I'm really hopeful that we can get this, like Art said, moving in. I'm a little apprehensive that the county is really good to say what can happen, and then what actually happens oftentimes, most times, don't match up. So I'm a little concerned about that timing. I'm hoping the contractor, obviously, is a great one and has a good relationship with the county. That can make a big difference.
It can be very helpful, that's for sure. Um, we just, what we've noticed, and I, I did speak with Christine about this back in December, and the commentary that she provided in that meeting was, coming out of the pandemic, the county was really struggling because they were just completely under-staffed. And so that whole issue with permitting processes, they were entering into something like a two-hundred-day-plus delay. Um, so we were sitting and waiting and waiting and waiting. Um, at this point, it sounds like they're fully staffed, they're getting back into the cycle, and she did not anticipate issues. I did express to her our profound interest in having this project move along in a timely fashion. And she said that that should not be an issue for the district, and that she understood we need to have that get started on time so that we'll be able to have it completed on time.
I guess the only time will tell is when we get that pre-meet done, if that's correct. Let's hope.
Yeah, thank you, man. I believe unless it's changed, there's a code change coming that's kind of gone wrong, right? And involved in this permitting process for the last year or so, so that, so, but, um, yeah. And then the last thing I'll say is I'm very glad to see that, um, the plans, um, for not just addressing the gym, but the surrounding infrastructure.
Correct.
That's usually, sometimes that gets forgotten, so it's good to see a compliment to the project team that they're going to add to come to look at the loss of the block, the varied, all of that information, so.
Correct.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Any questions? Okay, and we will not be in the executive session, correct?
We do not need a second session.
All right, well, I have six to serve, right on the dot. This meeting is adjourned.
Close of the meeting, we will be closing out the meeting. Thank you for being here this evening.